I open this meeting of the Planning Commission July 28, 2025 at 6:30 PM. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Chair Reynolds.
Here.
Vice Chair Almond. Commissioner Coronado.
Here.
Commissioner Neely. Commissioner Radulovich.
Present.
Commissioner Roethlisberger.
Here.
Commissioner Santana.
Here.
Commissioner Goodman.
Here.
With Vice Chair Almond out, Goodman moves into a voting position. We have quorum.
Thank you, and please rise if you are able to and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing no one on staff raising their hands, the agenda is approved as published. We do have one set of minutes to be approved. I'll call for a motion in a second on the certification of the June 9, 2025, meeting minutes.
I move to approve, based on the clerk's certification, the June 9, 2025, regular meeting of the Littleton Planning Commission.
Second. Motion by Radulovich, seconded by Coronado. I will set up the voting.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries.
All right. If you would like to address the Planning Commission under public comment, there is a sign-up sheet in front of the room to sign up. If you were not able to sign up and still wish to speak, you may speak after those who have signed up have already spoken. This public comment section is an opportunity to express opinions regarding issues that are not a part of the public hearings on tonight's agenda. There will be a separate opportunity to comment on those items. And as a reminder, each speaker is limited to three minutes, and we expect the testimony to be civil. And finally, under Colorado Open Meetings law, we cannot discuss, comment, or take action at this meeting on issues that are raised during public comment that is not part of the agenda. First sign-up is Pam Chadbourne.
Hi, Planning Commission. My name is Pam Chadbourne. I live a block or so from here. I am going to, I go to almost all the boards and commissions fairly regularly. So I have an unusual perspective of the actions of the city. And I'm going to say here that current, the city, current and future populations are not being well-served by our current city processes and management practices. You have a public hearing about processes, but it's an example of the problem, not a solution. One of the ways I'd put this is that what's being done is reactive, not proactive. Oh, this happens, so we're going to try to Band-Aid it with this. And that there's no future impact. There's no outcome or impact to the city, the people currently in the city and in the future of the changes. They seem to be explained by, oh, staff wants this, or an applicant wants that, and that's it. And that is not appropriate. What every board and commission person is here for, in my opinion, and City Council, the electeds as well, is to represent the people and the general welfare of the city over time. I want you to reorient to that. I want you to keep thinking of that, and I want you to remind yourselves of that. You are here for the general welfare of the city currently and over time. So what that requires is an integrated understanding of the system impacts of changes and based on evidence and data. And we all need that. The public needs that. Staff needs that to construct good proposals. And you need that to make good decisions. So let me say, the passage of the 3A ballot measure was game-changing for the city. Before that, we didn't have budgets that were balanced. After that, we had the first five-year budget in the black for many years. But I'm going to have to say that our old land use code over 60 years resulted in a city that had better financial performance than most, with extraordinarily good balance between retail, manufacturing, commercial, and residential in the city. And it made us more resistant to downturns. And it was only 3A that held us back, and once that passed, we had a fix. Our previous code is very rare, what that built, and should be recognized and treasured. But instead, our new land use code failed to recognize any of that. It pretty much destroys it and uses Littleton land like anywhere. So I could go on, but I want you to be aware of these things, and please think about that as you make your deliberations. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Planning Commission during the public comment section?
My name is Brad Nicholson. I guess I didn't see the agenda. Is the water board on the agenda for today, the water board property?
The only public hearing on the agenda is code text amendments regarding subdivisions.
Okay, so I live off, so the water board property is on Bowles between Platte Canyon and Sheridan, and they're doing a development there. I live in the neighborhood that borders this, called Boomer South, and they're not looking, they're looking to put 16 to 20 houses on this property, and they are not looking to, they're not, they're saying they are not putting a light, which means every one of these cars will be taking a right and having to go right into our neighborhood, which will increase the traffic in our neighborhood by 150%. There's also no way for any child or any person on a bicycle or walking to get out of that neighborhood unless you're in a car and driving and taking a right and then going through another neighborhood that's not part of this property and increasing that neighborhood's traffic by 150%. But there's a school right nearby. They want to put single-family homes in this property, and there's no way, there's no sidewalk on that side of Bowles. There is no light. With no light, there will be no way for someone to hop on a bicycle and leave that house, that property. I don't understand how they're even able to do something like this without buying a house in like our neighborhood and building a road and incorporating them in or putting a light so that these people can go east or west out of that property. So it's very dangerous. I know these, this is a planning commission. They've been, we've gone to a couple meetings, and I just don't understand how a whole neighborhood with 16 single-family homes can exist without them either trespassing or getting hit by a car if they try to leave on a bicycle or walking. It just doesn't make sense to me. Thank you so much for your time, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Planning Commission at this time? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the next portion of the agenda. There are no general business items, but we do have a public hearing item. PC Resolution 07-2025 recommending approval to City Council of Code Text Amendments to Title 10, the Unified Land Use Code related to process improvements. We'll hear from staff, and then any questions from Planning Commission, followed by public comment. Staff, please proceed.
Great. Thank you, Chair Reynolds. My name is Andrea Vaughn. I am a senior planner in community development. And as introduced, I am here tonight to talk about proposed process improvements to the ULUC. Best way to think about these as we go through is just how we are looking to best streamline some of our processes. Tonight, we will look at two items, or two portions of the code where we have identified potentials for streamlining our processes. That is in plating and notice of mailing. For plating, we do have three items, or three portions of the code that are being touched on, looking for a recommendation of approval tonight. And the first is to update some criteria in order to minimize the need for conditional approval of a plot. There is some unclear language in the code, and we've seen need to conditionally approve some plots in the past. And so what staff is proposing is to really clear up some of the language, reduce redundancies, and again, look to potential future development in the criteria, as well as what exists on the lot. The second item that staff has identified in our plating process that could be really looked at and ideally removed are condominium plots. The city does still look at the buildings themselves. Condo plots really only subdivide the building, not the land. And so any changes to, any new development or redevelopment of the land would still come in to staff for review, but that plating process, which is very specific according to Colorado State statute and is reviewed by land use lawyers as well as the county, and staff is recommending just full removal of condominium plots from the city and for those documents to be reviewed by the county. And finally, for plating, we have also identified the right-of-way dedication criteria for preliminary plots as a potential to be removed when right-of-way dedication has been contemplated in a city adopted document such as the Transportation Master Plan. This commission, over the last year, has seen two applications where right-of-way dedication was the only criteria that required public hearing for preliminary plot. So staff is cleaning up some of the language here, removing dedication of public land or right-of-way from the applicability of an administrative plot, and making it clear that right-of-way dedication may be utilized for an administrative plot. It does not amend any of the other preliminary plot criteria, so large lot developments or subdivisions of more than five lots would still come to this council or to this commission. And next, staff has also noticed that there are some conflicts in our notice of mailings, as well as it's pretty rigid in terms of who's required to provide that. And staff is just seeking some flexibility for who may provide notice, whether it be city staff or an applicant, should they choose. So here we can see staff has just removed those, that specificity for who is providing notice. We can see in neighborhood meetings, the code states that the applicant shall provide written notice. However, when you get to the next section of the code where we have notice by mail, it states that city staff. So we find that there's a conflict there that needs to be taken care of. And by just removing who shall provide, we think that that also provides some flexibility should an applicant decide that they would like to provide notice. Staff would still be involved with the mailing. Staff would provide the addresses, the template, and would verify that mailings had been provided within the 10 days that is required by code. And that concludes our presentation for tonight. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission recommend approval of Resolution 07-2025 to the City Council. Happy to take any questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Are there any initial questions for staff from Planning Commission at this time?
Thanks for the presentation. One thing that I noticed that's not in the presentation but is on the exhibit on the resolution, it's that first page, 10, 6, 1.2D, sub 2. The title is condo plots, and everything else in the code says condominium plots. I think just to make everything clear, we just call that condominium plots, maybe?
We can take a look at that and ensure that we are consistent throughout the code.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Did I see gestures over here?
Okay, so just a quick question, or maybe, maybe you said this, and I missed it because I was trying to catch up, but the, is it just, is it just the initial plat for the condos or that goes to the county instead of the city?
So it would be the plat document itself.
Okay, so it's just this, there's, there's only one in that case?
Right. And, and again, we do still review everything, any impacts to the building, redevelopment, new development. That's all reviewed by staff.
Right.
The condo plat just divvies up the building itself.
Okay, yeah, there was just, there were some cases in here, I think, where we were talking about administrative, or you know, there were comments about the administrative versus the preliminary plat. And I wasn't sure.
Condo plots are, are reviewed administratively currently by the city. So that would just remove condo plots from our processes entirely and allow an applicant proposing a condo plot to work with their land use lawyer as well as the county.
Sure, okay. And we already submit, do condo plots already also go to the, to the county?
We record all plots with the county. We just currently review them.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, yeah, so I was just trying to understand how much of a shift this was and depending on what the county's process is for the plating versus what the city's process was for the plating and where there was a shift in that. And it sounds like it's, it's an extra step that you have to do right now, but it doesn't alter the long-term kind of filing and registration of that plat with the county any differently?
No, not really. It just, it just requires the applicant to go through our processes first before recording with the county.
Sure, okay. But obviously, like, anything that you're doing from your process perspective, you're still kind of doing from a review perspective, just not the...
In terms of land, the land use, yeah. The state statute is so hyper-specific that really staff does not have a role in this. Oftentimes, when we're looking at it, we're just kind of checking some boxes. We do have our city attorney take a look at these, but again, they're, they're, these plots are hyper-legal documents.
Okay. Yeah, that's my, that's sort of been my impression from the cases that we have seen and what we're looking at. But I do want to, I did want to kind of just make sure that that was discussed a little here, just so everybody, I think sometimes the world of plating is not straightforward to folks who don't work in it. And I just wanted to be clear about what this is actually changing in terms of the process and the city's authority over what we review those things for in terms of any new development or any changes to those land uses. So, yeah, so thank you for that. Also, yes, definitely in support of the, the right-of-way. I think there was, you know, I remember there was one point where we got to all sit around and discuss for like a three-foot carve-out for a potential future roundabout that was, I think, perhaps not the best use of city staff time to have you guys all in here so that we could talk about a tiny little carve-out. So, yeah, appreciate all the cleanup. And then, yeah, I, I want to note too that, yes, everything I'm seeing, I agree with you in the mailings, because we're not seeing a change to the process. We're just making it clear that whoever does it, right, the same requirements still apply and the same adherence to those requirements applies. But if the, if the, if the applicant wants to do it directly versus asking staff to do it, that could also be helpful for city staff to not have to, to take on that extra burden as well, so.
Right. And I just want to be really clear on that, too. Staff is still, will still be very involved in that from scheduling to ensure that it doesn't conflict with anything scheduled for the city, that the location is appropriate. We just would not, we would provide the applicant an opportunity themselves to print and mail.
Right, yeah, that's, that's what I mean. You're not, you're not spending your time running down to the kinkos or whatever they call it these days. All right, thank you.
I did come up with one question here, and more of a clarification. Under 10, 9, 7.3, under preliminary plat, I notice under decision criteria, bullet, or paragraph 3 standard specifications, you added the reference to Littleton Engineering Design Standards, the LEDs, which I believe is now approved, correct?
LEDs is not quite approved yet, but this language has actually always been in the code. Not having LEDs has kind of created some discussion here as well before.
Okay. It's highlighted in blue, so I thought that was a change. So it was already in there?
Sorry, then the highlight in blue just means it's a link within the document.
Oh, okay.
Probably a definition later in the document.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have.
Any additional questions? Seeing none, we'll open the public comment portion of this public hearing at 6:50 PM. And the clerk will be collecting the sign-in sheet for those who are interested in speaking regarding this item. I do have one person signed up, Pam Chadbourne.
I'm Pam Chadbourne. I live a couple of blocks from here, or half blocks. And so this is a specific example of how our, what we seem to be doing is focused very much on a very narrow, a reactive result to something an applicant may have experienced, without any explanation of the impact of this on the long-term benefits or harms to the city. And let me be clear about something. Many of you don't know this. The old code had a complete Chapter 11 for, for subdivisions and plating. The new code wiped that out and incorporated it into the regular code. And now we apparently have to make that even easier or less subject to public awareness review or staff review. I don't agree with that, and I have not heard, I have not heard the staff explain to us what that costs the city in the long run. So right from the bat, I think that there is not enough evidence to justify any of these changes. There could be a clear and present continuing threat to Littleton's future, and we don't know that without evidence. So the full removal of condo plots by the city and changing them to the county, I, I'm not sure I understand why you'd go backwards. We want condos, or at least we want ownership. We seem to be building a lot of rentals, which are going to benefit the short-term builders for a while in terms of the number of units that we're allowing them to build, very intense multi-family. But where are our condos? I want quarterly reports by staff for what has been approved for building and then what has been permitted for building, and how much of it is ownership and how much of it is rental. We don't even have that. I want you to demand this, Planning Commission. Nobody else can do this other than you. You are the people on the front line here. We need to know how much ownership is being done. And to say, oh, let's let the county do it, it's the wrong direction. Also, the loss of the public process for the public acquisition of right-of-way, who benefits and who is disadvantaged? I want to know that. The public is at least disadvantaged by this proposed change because we won't see it. And, you know, they may not all be small. So all changes affecting public assets should come to a public process. It is not something you should give away. And the notice is not, the problems that the public has with notification, the short distance, is not even addressed here. But this other change is. Whose priorities are being served? Thanks.
Thank you. That concludes the folks who have signed up to speak regarding this item. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak regarding the proposed code amendments? Seeing no one approaching the podium, I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing at 6:54 PM and call for a motion, second, and discussion.
Chair Reynolds, we normally have another round of questioning after, after that.
Normally have a, pardon me?
There was more questioning typically after the public hearing. I just had, I was just holding my questions till then. I don't know if that...
You have questions for staff, then? Certainly. Go for it.
Sorry. First off, can you make the argument as to why we should remove the right-of-way out of this, please?
Absolutely. So it is right-of-way that has already been contemplated in city-approved documents. So the acquisition of that right-of-way has already gone through review. So the acquisition of that right-of-way has already gone through review. Um, so in the transportation master plan, we do have right-of-way that is required for new development. Or there are some areas of the city that are required to provide that right-of-way to the city. Um, so by having them go through the preliminary plat process, it is staff's view that we are asking an applicant to effectively have, for you all to approve something that has been approved prior. So we're asking an applicant to go through a process for approval of right-of-way when that acquisition has already been approved through a city-adopted document, such as the transportation ma- master plan.
Okay, thank you, um. As far as the public notice goes, the notice by mail, we take out a responsibility and there is no one, li- that, that, nothing is, is put in as to who is to do it. Um, every other thing in this section assigns responsibility somewhere to an applicant, to the city, to whoever, whomever. Do I think this would not happen? It, it can't, it's just a matter of where we're going to shift whose responsibility it is. I personally would be all for changing this to the applicant's responsibility, because I would rather they spend their money on it than us spend ours. Is there a, a world in which that happens?
It's possible, we have had some applicants, um, state that they would like to provide the notices themselves. Again, we would provide the template, the notice, the mailing address is required to be noticed. Um, our process is, we do ha- we do print them out in-house, so it does kind of slow down a process just slightly, it's, um, we ask for a three-week lead notice in order to meet that ten-day requirement in the code. Um, so we have had some applicants, um, look to wanting to do that for neighborhood ma- meetings in particular. Um, so it is possible.
So i- if I may also, um, we already do get reimbursed from the applicant. So it is something that, uh, our process is that we create the postcards, we do the, the mailings, so the postage, and then we bill that back to the applicant. Mostly what this affords applicants, so it's basically, we're not assigning, uh, in this code update, we're not assigning a, you know, individual in particular, it's giving us the option to go either-or, applicant or staff. And as, you know, Senior Planner Vaughn indicated, it's all about a timing scenario. So most of the time, we have processes in place that it does, that we have time for these notices. On occasion, we get applicants that are, you know, really ready to go, really ready to move, and would like to do so prior to three weeks. So they would still have to have the ten-days' notice per code, but if they can cut off, say, a week or so that it takes us to, you know, route something through our system, that's really what this potentially affords them is some time-saving.
Okay, I just would probably prefer to see language that it's, that it, that it does assign someone, because it just, it's ambiguity, ambiguity in these things never seems to really be nice. At risk of probably being told to stay in my lane here, is there a way to increase the number of days of lead time? I know it's not something that's red-lined out, but increasing it to like fifteen rather than ten, just to make sure that the, the notifications arrive on time?
That was, um, out of the scope of what we were looking at, um, that would have, we could certainly take a look at that, um, to see, you know, what, what is the ideal date, how, what are mailings looking like? Unfortunately, the post office is just something we don't have any input for, um.
Yeah, I realize that, and it's, like everything else, is having its budget slashed, so, um, it's probably going to take longer than, than we anticipate. So I would like to see that addressed at some point, I don't know if that's, like I said, that, that, I'm gonna get probably told to stay in my lane here. But, um, uh, another thing with the public notice, um, in ten-nine-three-five, hang on, let me get there, um. I know it's in Perrin too, which doesn't have any red lines in it. Um, but it, it lists a number of areas where you, where you do the public notice, such as a newspaper, generally in circulation. And this might have been, like I said, it's not red-lined, but, uh, I think this would be far more effective if we did, if we had a social media component attached to this somewhere, um, it would also, uh, I think behoove us to put it in the Littleton report, because we're putting, the, this is a mailing that goes out to every household in the, in the city anyway, and even inside the Littleton report in that area, put, hey, there's a weekly version of this that you could get an update with, and it would be a far more effective way to reach people, in my opinion, even probably than increasing the size of the area, things of that nature. I think it's just the way that we're moving as a society, and, um, I would like to see that addressed at some point.
Absolutely, I think we can actually at least start with our internal processes and start working with our communications team on that.
That, that would be wonderful if I could start seeing that at some point, because I'd be, I think it's a, a really good tool that's being un- underutilized right now as far as notification of public hearings, so. Um, as far as it, going back to, uh, Commissioner Roethlisberger's line of questioning, are you, are, if the, the, this, the applicant goes through the county in order to do the plat, is there a documentation process that they, that it goes through that you'll, that you'll be able to see? I'm sure you guys communicate with him in some way, shape, or form, um, just to make sure that this meets the, the state statute.
So typically with a condominium plat, oftentimes here as of late, it's, uh, it's a building that already exists. Um, so we've already looked at it from the perspective of site planning elements. When we do have a new duplex or something, uh, come through, we, they have a choice whether they want to divide it down the middle and basically have two parcels with the building in the middle, or they could condo-plat it. Either way, we still have to review it for, uh, conformance with the ULUC on the site planning perspective. But if you want to, you know, condo-ize something, it's not changing the form of the building, it's not really cha- it's just changing the ownership structure, so that's something that, um, uh, you know, we feel that it's not necessarily our purview to work on the ownership structure of something, um, we are definitely more in, uh, involved when it's the form of the building or, or new parcel lines, right? So that's where we feel, uh, is our purview.
Okay, I guess I'm concerned more with just like, how is this being documented and how you're communicating with your, with your counterparts at the city level, or at the county level, excuse me, that's just probably more the concern, because I just want to make sure that that communication is, is happening and that it's, it's documented and the like. The, uh, was it ten-three-three-six? Number two C. There's an area in here where the applicant shall prepare a written summary, this has to do with neighborhood meetings. Um, includes a list of meeting attendees, summary of attendee, and I know that this seems to get left out of our reports sometimes. This particular thing with neighborhood meetings, I know that Commissioner Coronado is actually very good at asking this question as to where it, you know, did it happen where it's at, things of that nature. It's where, I'm guessing this just is in the packet of everything, and I just would like to reiterate that we should be getting that with every packet.
Yeah, typically it's on the Dow, but I understand the desire to have it in the packet as well.
Okay, thank you, that's all I got.
Any additional questions for staff? For, right, call for. Okay.
Um, just to follow up on Commissioner Radulovich's thing, is it, with the, um, who sends out the mailings? Kind of what I've heard from you guys is there's two options, so I think just lay out the two options in there and I think that's, that's a good way to solve that, rather than having the ambiguity, ambiguity, if even that's the right one, in the, in this text.
Um, if, if I may, we're more than happy to have, um, you know, a motion with, uh, recommended, uh, language that we place staff or applicant within that portion of the code, and we can, uh, we can move that forward to the city council.
Additional questions for?
Uh, yeah, I would just like to follow up on Commissioner Radulovich's point on, uh, just sort of dissatisfaction with these public notifications. I think, yeah, the Littleton report would be a start, but, you know, we have the public comment here. I don't know how much we wanted to get into the weeds of scaling, uh, deliverables based on impact of the city. That's, that seems pretty hard to define how that would play out, but, um, you know, starting with the, the report, I think, you know, that's, that's something to be considered, I would say, and, um, yeah, that's just been a recurring theme of dissatisfaction of basically every meeting we've ever had, is that, uh, that seven-hundred-foot radius is, you know, not satisfactory, so I think that's something that, uh, we could, we should consider for further redlining.
Additional questions for staff? All right, with that, I'll call for a motion in a second, and perhaps Commissioner Goodman has a motion incorporating a proposed change.
Okay, I'll, uh, move to approve PC Resolution oh-seven-twenty-twenty-five, recommending approval to the city council of code text amendments to Title X, the Unified Land Use Code, related to process improvements.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Roethlisberger and a second by Commissioner Radulovich, a discussion on this. Well, I'll start down at this end.
No significant comments, thank you for the presentation, um, we've discussed this at a few hearings now, um, I think it's relatively clear, I'm agnostic about adding additional language. The requirement that notice be given seems fine, there may be a third or fourth party that staff might find useful in sending out notices at some point, I think, I'm, I'm agnostic about whether that needs to have further clarification. It's a requirement of the code that notice be given, and the whole point of this amendment is to allow that flexibility and that, just as long as the notice gets sent, so I'm, I'm kind of not sure, I, I think we need to modify it, but, um, overall, thank you.
Uh, no further questions, thank you.
Uh, no further comment.
Yeah, thank you again for your presentation and the cleanup on this, um, I, I do want to say that, uh, from the, uh, some of the discussions and, and things we've talked about in the reviews that I'm, you know, and, and some of the things that I've sat through already. The change in the plating process sounds like from a day in the life of, before this change to after this change, um, is pretty minimal, because you are still involved in reviewing those changes. And you are still involved in ensuring that submitted to, you know, and, and, and that that submittal and that change has gone to the county, um, like you already do, so, um, I think that, uh, I, I think that removing a little bit of the administrative burden from you, um, in terms of some of the filing, especially given that you are still enforcing all the code requirements and the things that really, um, the, both the, the, the city and the public, uh, need to be aware of is, um, is, is, is already happening. I think the right-of-way discussion, having been through, uh, at least one of these meetings, was, um, it's, it's, it's to the benefit of the city. Um, it's to the benefit of the people of Littleton when we need additional right-of-way associated with our transportation master plan improvements. So I think that that's important to remember. Um, a note about some of the, the notifications that some of my fellow commissioners were mentioning, if I recall correctly, the Little, is the Littleton report bimonthly or monthly? Quarterly?
If I'm not mistaken, the Littleton report online is every other week, I believe. But then the Littleton report, the print edition, is every other month.
Right, yeah, so, I, I, I guess, you know, I think that's important to keep in mind if we're talking about we need to have notifications in the Littleton report, um, would be to restrict that maybe to the Littleton report online, rather than trying to tie up some of these notifications, because I think we said, what, there's a ten-day, there's a ten-day period associated with those mailings in the code versus all of a sudden an eight-week delay in the printed report, uh, you know, maybe a non-issue for the, the online report that comes out every other week. But I do like maybe, you know, leveraging that online report, because, uh, email is, email is ubiquitous, it's been around for, it, it's been ubiquitous for twenty-five years, so I, I don't think anybody is really struggling with that anymore, and I think that it's kind of an insult to suggest that maybe some of our seniors can't manage email. But regardless, uh, yeah, so that was it, I just, yeah, thank you for putting this together, and I do agree that I think this is, this is a lot of cleanup and, and streamlining that will be a benefit to all of us to have.
Okay, and, um, summary, I, I support, um, these code amendments, appreciate staff's time and effort and presentation. Yeah, but here's why, um, you know, all code changes like this are important, certainly appreciate the thoughtful discussion around, um, um, public feedback that we've received, not just at this meeting, but at previous meetings, uh, study sessions and so on. The benefits of these relatively minor revisions are, are pretty intuitive to me. They conform to the changing context and best practices of planning in general, things change, and, um, we're learning, we're all learning, staff's learning, planning commissions, councils, learning from, uh, past glitches that we've, uh, encountered and, and the intent here is to make the processes, uh, more simpler, more straightforward, more predictable. Uh, the, you know, the real tension is between keeping codes, uh, static in the interest of slowing progress or development down versus making things easier and, and presumably, um, reducing the cost of development and access to, um, to, to the benefits of development, whether it be housing or businesses, activity. So this is something that we have to balance, and, and this is certainly helping to, um, grease the wheels, if you will, of, um, of the processes that we hear are difficult for people to navigate, so. That's all I have.
All right, yeah, thank, thank you for those comments, and one, one phrase that stood out for me in the, the staff report in discussing some of the proposed process amendments, is that, uh, failing to do these, uh, the current version of the code results in additional staff time without creating a better product or furthering city goals. So these are fixes that are intended to streamline where appropriate, because the effort expended by city staff was not doing anything in the furtherance of city goals. I think, you know, as, as a resident and taxpayer, I would prefer the city staff to be doing something other than busy work uh, for, uh, me as one of the constituents. Appreciated the, the discussion about specificity on the notice, um, I'm, I think I, I agree with Commissioner Santana that it, it doesn't really matter exactly whether we specify who does the notice or not, it's the importance of actually having the notice done, and if somebody, whoever it is, fails to accomplish one of those notice tasks that's outlined in the code, we can't even have a hearing here. Uh, and it's been quite a while, but, uh, sometimes there have been notice failures, and something that was otherwise planned to be on a planning commission didn't make it because the notice was not done. The critical thing is that the notice gets done, not who actually performs the administrative tasks to ensure that it's done. So I, yeah, I just, I appreciate these changes, and one thing that I found reassuring was that the dedication of right-of-way through that administrative plating process is only for those items that are identified, uh, in our transportation plans. So we have a document that says, this is the right-of-way we want in this location, and allow. And allowing that to be accepted, delegated by the council to the staff to accept on their behalf is appropriate. And I have actually administered subdivision codes with those features. And accepting right-of-way that way worked pretty well in those circumstances. Any other final discussion? I will set up the vote.
The vote is seven in favor, the motion carries.
All right, thank you. And thank you to those who spoke regarding this item. Are there any reports from community development staff?
Just that it's Western Welcome Week is coming up, and therefore, we try our best to limit the amount of public meetings during that event, because it is a week full of city items and engagement. So, we do not plan to have a meeting on the 11th, August 11th. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. City attorney, city clerk?
No report.
No report.
Any members of the Planning Commission?
Just a quick, I just want to say thank you in advance to both, all the work that City is doing for Western Welcome Week, but also the Criterion coming up. This is undoubtedly, I think, one of the best events in the metro area. I love it, I invite everyone I know, and I tell them it's one of the best events in the metro area by far. So, thank you for making that happen again, for any input and work that you guys have had to do to get that going, because I think it really is a star attraction for Littleton, and I'm really glad that we can have that in our city.
Yeah, just a question for staff. I know our last study session, we talked about the greenscape standards. And thank you for pulling it off the agenda here. I think we were going to consider it tonight. Do you have a timeline that you would like to get comments back on that? And a timeline for incorporating those code text amendments in the future?
Currently, we've been talking about bringing it back to the Planning Commission or aspects of it back to the Planning Commission on August 25th. So, we'll be working on the agenda packet for that in the coming weeks.
I've been going through and making some detailed comments. Can I just get with you, Jared or Andrea, on this?
You can reach out to me. Depending on which part of it, we may put you in touch with Public Works as well.
Okay, thank you. And just as a little public announcement, you know, one of the, we had mentioned the engineering design standards. Those are open for public comment for a little under five more hours. Public comment closes July 28th, that's today. So, if you're interested in the design of streets, public comment period will be open for 45 days through July 28th. So, you have a little under five hours to review the 323-page document and provide comments on the website. And I will say, it's truly an important document, because it establishes all of our street cross-sections, designs for sidewalks, curb radii, which sounds arcane, but that's how wide the curbs are when you're driving around them. And those have an impact on how traffic functions, how pedestrians navigate the city, and how bicyclists do as well. So, encourage folks to spend the next four hours and 40 minutes looking at those. And with that, I will adjourn this meeting at 7:19 PM.